I believe this is the fire department of which a chance one nation under God is able to bring justice for all.
These things in petitions. For the bodies, the parade permit for the brothers of the brush Santa parade.
Move to approve parade permit for the brothers of the brush Santa parade on twelve three twenty-one at six thirty P M from Misco to Clough down north of Av and authorize parking the town on the town property on November.
Second. Discussion.
You want to talk about it out?
Just here if there's any questions.
I'm good. I'm good. All in favor?
Tenor, hi. Oh, sorry. Hi.
Hi.
Consider slash review historical commission appointment, Constance Beal.
I move to appoint Constance Beal to the historical commission for term expires six thirty twenty.
Second. Discussion. Want to ask you any questions? She is here. She is in the audience.
Would you like to come up and, uh, sorry, Lynn, did you have anything or?
No, just really excited about having Connie join us if she is appointed.
Connie, would you like to just come up briefly and tell us why you're interested?
Connie, do you want to, and I know that, and I'm interested in my family coming to town and I'm, and I like anything, see if it is possible.
Good to me.
Thank you so much.
Hey, hi. Welcome.
Thank you.
To the appointment of.
Oh, sorry. What's that? Hey, Lynn, did you, is the meeting postponed or are we still?
To the appointment of firefighter commander, paramedic Shane.
Thank you. Briefly to start, this is Shane Kooming. We had a career opening in the fire department due to a retirement and it's very difficult to hire a firefighter, paramedics in today's world. We were fortunate to have Shane come forward. He's got a bachelor's degree in oncology from UMass San Peters, went to B and T for right around four years and recently got his paramedic back in June, very long timeframe. Doesn't have any fire experience, but as he explained to us, he grew up wanting to be a firefighter, paramedic, kind of got steered towards college by his family. I was hoping to realize his dream. They go through the interview process and all the other prerequisites, background check has been done. And he's obviously our top choice. I'd recommend approving an appointment to the position for a firefighter.
I gotta ask, what's kinesio?
It's a study of like the movement of the human body. So like anything from like, you know how they analyze like pictures and stuff and then like Fitbit, stuff on like Fitbits and stuff like that, and then sports medicine, PT, stuff like that.
Excellent.
And you're, so you're fully qualified as a paramedic?
Yes.
Yes. And the appointment would be, or it is probationary period. He does, is required to graduate from the Mass Fire Academy Career Recruit Program. Unfortunately, because they had half the size of the class with the pandemic in that, they're really extended. So he's got until, the next class that he would be in is April, early April, with a graduation at the end of June. So in that timeframe, similar to a firefighter, paramedic, Alex Strela, we hired him as a paramedic only as well. We'll train him in this, the timeline leading up to that, so that he can help his partner that he's working with. But we won't let him do things like a little bit burning building without having the certification for the career.
Move to appoint Shane Kooming to your career firefighter, paramedic, great, one hundred thirty-six per hour, additional dot one dollar eight cent per hour, paramedic.
Second.
Excellent. Welcome aboard.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Consider request for original careers, my, or the basics.
Well, this board may know, actually, this is my first day here. I don't think, I've had somebody out on injured on duty every day that I've been working here. That one retired a little over a year, year and a half, two years ago, and then the one just retired. So we have a third one still out. I haven't come to the board before, even though we were looking at retirement with the previous people, because, you know, there was always a little element of a doubt as to how that process would go. For this third one, and without getting into the medical stuff, it's pretty definite that he will not be able to return. Both his own personal doctor and the town's insurance doctor said that. So that retirement process is going on, the disability retirement, because it takes seven to eight months. And we just, I just started that back in September. So we're looking at probably around the end of March that we would get the final determination. Currently, to fill the spots, we're hiring, besides our on-call personnel, we hire FERD EMTs and paramedics, and of course, FERD EMTs are not firefighter trained. If they are, they typically career with another department, and they don't want to do the firefighter part here, so they don't get hurt at a fire scene and have their primary job suffer for them. So with the pending retirement, I'd like to post a provisional job for firefighter EMT basic, the person who is out on disability and now going through that process is a basic level. With the appointment of Shane, I will have five out of the six positions at the paramedic level, which feels sufficient for the town amendment and calls we have to allow them to get experience as well as town coverage. This position would be provisional, and the wording that I put in says this position is a provisional appointment to fill on anticipated spring 2022 opening due to pending retirement. In the event the retirement does not occur, this position will be rescinded and vacated. So it will help finally settle the staff down to six out of, we require seven positions to cover twenty-four seven. Currently, we're authorized at six. So there's still a seventh position that I'll probably see, talk to you guys about in the, in the springtime through the budget process. So we still have to hire forty-eight hours of shift bill time, even if we fill this position. But we think we can do that with primarily our, our own on-call firefighter EMTs who are certified. So this will give us, for the first time since I've been here, really two firefighters on duty as well as two EMS personals. So I, I request that the board approve this provisional position is provisional when retirement occurs.
So might you just answer a question? So the, this is replacing somebody who's out right now?
Currently out.
And, and it's already budgeted.
The person who's out, yes. So through the town insurance, we get money to help offset that person's salary. It's not quite offset completely, but we're also currently paying to fill those hours. And, and because sometimes I can get one of our personnel, EMT at sixteen dollars in change, a lot of times we're paying for a paramedic at about twenty-six dollars of FERD EMT. If we can't do those, then we're paying overtime at forty-three to forty-seven dollars. So I've budgeted and filling this about twenty-two hours, twenty-two dollars an hour for those. The entry level fire position rate, oh, rate twenty-three eighty-six an hour. So it's almost a wash on filling with a part-time FERD EMT person. The exception would be on the benefit side, and if I need to, I can find that within the budget, because the person who just retired that Kooming is coming in for, he was at a top step pay, and Mr. Kooming will be at the entry level. So there is some room in the current year budget.
I move to, I move to offer the fire chief to execute the hiring process for provisional career firefighter, your position with provisional being the position will become a regular career appointment on the expired, expected retirement of a current career member. Should the anticipated retirement not occur and the employment employee returns back to work, the provisional position will be vacant. Second.
Think it's a great idea.
All in favor?
Hi. Thank you very much.
It is just a.
So as I spoke into, to you a couple, a couple weeks ago, I think it was, a neighbor in town got unexpectedly left without a piece of fire apparatus, without an engine or even a brush truck on a Saturday. And so in communication with their deputy chief and myself, I'd offered to loan them an engine until they could, until they could at least get to Monday and get theirs repaired. So we, I had to make phone calls just to try and get that approval, because we're actually giving them a piece of our equipment, as opposed to sending something mutual aid like we do to the fire incident. Selectment, Marali asked, select person Marali asked me to put this on an agenda item, so that in the future, I, if the board agrees, I have the authority, you know, using the memorandum of understanding to make that agreement right away and get them whatever equipment they need as long as it works for us as well.
Now, that, that was my thought is that, you know, I don't have to see it saying no. He says it should be yes. So just to give him that authority as long as he notifies us right away and that we're aware. Why delay it?
Absolutely. Yeah, great. I move to authorize the fire chief to enter into future agreements with mutual aid account in order to facilitate the timely lending and or borrowing of equipment due to equipment breakdowns.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Consider chapter ninety and project trust.
I move to approve the chapter ninety project trust total of fifty thousand dollars to the town of Pritznell Drive, Colonial Drive, Presque Drive, Latin Port, Oak Hill Road, and Perm, Pudding Stone Lane, Puffer Drive, Russell Ford, and the Northfield Road.
Second.
Yeah, just these are.
All in favor?
Hi. Oh, yeah, like this is, they're not really doing road, they're just cracking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Consider one day special license on everybody's C G M.
I move to issue a one-day special license for all alcoholic beverages from Shell in Mark Munugent, Forty-Three Quissett Road, and the Cedar Hill Farm Fair on ten twenty-three twenty-one from ten A M to three P M for the arrangement of ten twenty-three. Anybody received cert, certificate of liability insurance in return of positive grounds?
I'll, I'll second. I, I wonder, did we get that yet, Laura? Did they?
No, not yet. We do not know.
So I spoke to, I did speak to Mark today, and I know you spoke to him as well.
I did, yes.
Their, their liability insurance is being adjusted. They just had the wrong, they had the wrong names and everything on them. The business certificate through Ellen, Mark had sent over the phone number, and Mark was giving them a call. He thought he, they believed that they had already done it when they opened the store, but was wanting to call him to find out where the discrepancy was, and approving it this way, at least it's, we won't have an immediate. So then if he doesn't get it in the end. Who's that? No, somebody just popped in.
But the point is, the most important thing is, it's not gonna happen unless they have the liability.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. No, yeah. Right, right. That's absolutely.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Still a block party with the brothers of the brush?
I don't know.
That's, that's more.
This is definitely a me.
Oh, you're.
Well, I've been to a few, a few events with the brothers of the brush, and, and the conversation always comes back that, hey, what are we doing in the block party? Because that was just, we had so much fun. I, I had a blast. I don't know if anybody else did. It was a great, it was a great day. The fireworks dinner tonight, I mean, just what a great community event, and definitely just would love to see it happen again. And as, as the brothers of brush said, there was, took about a year to plan. So that's why we're starting to talk about it now. I've already talked to a few people in town that Kelly, maybe hang out with the kids, I'll hang around, and the parents that, that I've spoken to all about. So I'm sure we, whatever we can work out between the brothers of the brush and, and us, I believe, and I don't, don't expect anybody to have a competitive night, I've really been telling anybody anything, but I believe there's an account, either the festival account or a block party account, something that has some money in it that we could use to maybe to help aid for some of this.
I believe it's listed as a three hundred and fiftieth anniversary account.
Okay, so we might have to.
So many questions. So, yes.
How many fireworks do we get?
Yes is the answer. It is listed as three hundred and fiftieth celebration. We, the board at the time, put twenty-five thousand dollars aside to help fund the town's portion of whatever it's gonna be. We then received an additional twenty-five fifty from the state for our purchase. We never actually used the money that we had set aside, but because it was put into a special account, it didn't roll over into free cash like it would. I, I mean, three fifty is pretty.
Specific.
Specific. I'm pretty sure we did it as a motion on the floor, so we have to take a look at a town meeting and see what the language actually was.
Okay.
If it falls with, or, you know, or any other there too, and it's basically, you know, we, we do have like a celebrations line in our regular operating budget. So it's possible we can figure out how to.
Well, I think it would be, based on what you just said, the motion is wrong, anything else in relation to.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, if the intent, the intent was to put the money aside for the three hundred and fiftieth block party. The block party happened, this is a different party, right?
I agree.
But all we have to do basically, it's such a half a year, so we just basically have to, pretty sure, right, change the vote and put it back, change the.
Change the name of the account.
Transfer it from that into that, and then figure out what it's for.
Yeah, I mean, it's a special account, and we can, we don't have to do it again. There's one exact.
I think if we can leave it a special account, that at least stops it trying to be used ever.
There was some talk of just at the end about using that money towards like a memorial gift. Sometimes when you have this three fifty, buy or do something. I don't know if that ever went anywhere, but that was the extent of any conversation post the actual.
Okay. I think that we'll just work on the, we gotta figure that out. We know we have a year to do it. So probably be scrambling, and you'll have a special one.
I will cling on to that money until there's a plan.
You could, you could even do it at annual.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Right, you can do it, and you just gotta move it. Take it out, change, revote it, and then you're good to go.
Yep. And I think that, yeah, and, you know, if this is something that, I know we're just talking about this one, but if we did something like this every five years or something like that.
That was the discussion after the three fifty. It's every event, people said, we want to do this event again. It's like, no picks them. We can't do everything. The discussion was that we do the block party every five years.
Yep. All right. So you don't, you don't.
How much money do we have? All right.
I believe, I believe it was a little over twenty-eight thousand in that account.
All right. Good start. It's a donation. Wants to listen to us in town.
Right. We'd get a third party.
Brothers.
Donate to the other, to them.
Brothers.
We would donate our share towards their thing. Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Consider us team one.
We don't. We don't. The separate entity, we just funded money towards a party that was here, you know, theoretically, the town's, yes. But then it turns out we had more money until we didn't have to use our, our. Yeah, can't imagine anything we could be done about. Okay. Warrant. We need time. Oh, I left it on late, yes. Okay.
We did go through most of this.
Yeah, this is, we have to send this thing out Thursday. So this is the end. Okay? So we went through this once before. Article one is bills for prior year. Those bills are somewhere. So I'm not, I haven't been in contact with FinCom. I don't know what their status is. I don't know if they're meeting or if they are, we need to send them over a month.
Yeah, that's why I asked you that.
All right.
My, my only concern is article twenty-three. I don't think it's necessary.
Well, I'm not, I have to go, I have other things first.
Okay. I thought you were.
Article two, typically, this is the line where we do the transfers for any sort of contractual increases that would have passed after the beginning of the fiscal year. The, right now, it doesn't appear as if we're going to need. So in the past, we've run this without printing these names, and people want to know who's getting them, and then we've run it with the names. At this point, I think because we are settled on three out of four of our contracts, or will be by this time, I'm gonna remove any of the ones that are not settled, because we're not doing transfers related to them at this meeting. That will have to wait till our next meeting in May. So this will probably just drop down about five or six.
So what, we haven't added the names in the past?
We don't add the names. We just, we put the titles, we, we do, we pub, we do, we, one year we didn't, and there was some feedback about people not knowing. Wanted to know before we got to town meeting about who we were talking about. And so then we started adding the list, and we've added it the last couple of years. So, and then we've also just left every single person that was on there, every employee. But at this point, we're only probably talking about five or six, and so we'll leave those on there. Like, I know we had a discussion this week about putting the highway surveyor on here for discussion. So that is where this, this is where it is, in this box.
Right. So say we do settle a contract negotiation by this time, it's not a shit off, so.
Well, that's, that's a risk. I mean, at this point, I mean, this is going to, we don't have our next meeting with the last union until the tenth, and this is meeting in the following week. So we're basically saying, do we think we'll need these a week later for some of the other positions? And I'd say the odds are probably not, if we want to publish them.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
If, does it hurt for it to be on?
I don't think so, unless people are gonna wonder why we're passing over some and another. I don't know. I just, I'm trying to make it as clear as possible, that's all, which we do and which we wouldn't do.
Do the motions specifically list out each one?
Yes, right. Because I contemplated today removing the bullets entirely, just keeping the language short. But then I thought, people will wonder, who are we talking about?
Could, could on the floor, someone, if the contract isn't negotiated, but if someone as a voter, can they amend zero, increase it, so that it doesn't actually respond with negotiation process?
I imagine so. I mean, okay.
Yeah, but, yeah, but again, I still, even if, so even if they did put the whole budget in there, the contract wasn't allowed for.
Right. It's not, it's not contractually binding, right. It would only apply if it was to one of the elected positions.
This would mess. Well, my, my question is, and I think you and I talked about this a little bit, if, if we've already appropriated money for salary negotiations, the town already approved that, if, if we have enough money in there to cover that, isn't it essentially delegated to us or whoever the particular position is to, to move that, to spend that money?
We have to transfer it. It has to be transferred. So it's, yeah.
We can't just transfer.
Right. And when, when we budget the reserve for negotiations, right, that line includes salary negotiations, it includes any other particular stipends or things, it includes negotiations that we might conduct, bringing in new employees, right, if we have to change this stuff. So it's, it's, it's a, it's an estimate, right, based upon what we think we would need, right? And so, you know, we always budget a certain percentage, you know? Most years, the last couple of years, if a contract is settled, I just put the percentage rate in, right? July one, they're all approved, we all move on, we don't want to do any retro transfers or anything. In negotiation years like this, this is our process. If you're not settled by the time we get to STM, the next available chance is for us to do it in May or to do year-end transfers. And in all of these cases, based upon what we've settled with other contracts, we're talking about small dollar amounts. There's no risk here that these salary lines are gonna run out of money by the end of the year before we could transfer it. And that's really the biggest issue, which is if we somehow couldn't do it, and even then, if you call them, or if you've been coming, they can do it. So we're, I mean.
That's all I was getting.
Yeah, there's many different ways to get there. This, but for the sake of transparency and simplicity, right, I just want to have the ones on there that we know that we're doing. That just seems to me, I mean, it doesn't mean anything besides, these are the ones we know for sure. Okay, stabilization. We, we don't have a free cash number yet, so I can't really tell you. The past, I think, our recommendations are a hundred, a hundred and fifty, you know, twenty-five for O P E V. I assume that's the same, what I'll be looking at once those come about. We also have that, that regional substance boost grant we do every year in the fall. The police chief, we talked about this last time, this is that revolving account for the cruisers, based upon when they do details. So the language is article seven to establish it, and then the limit is article eight. Article nine is a request from the town clerk who passed their certification. In the past, we've given a thousand dollar stipend. Think that might be a law, but this is the article for that. Ten, I'm pretty sure, Tom, like, also talked to us about needing additional equipment if there's an additional precinct, right, added. Yep. Eleven is the article about funding fire alarm systems and the phone wiring that we talked about. We have to get quotes, we don't know yet. Twelve is a placeholder for town hall campus. You know, we're going out to, we're gonna try to go out to bid on three different things this month. We'll get some press estimates for the painting, for the demo, and for the well. I'm trying to get some numbers in before STM. I mean, I, my preference would be to leave it just in case something comes back, and I'm thinking in the tubes, that, you know, we talked about fifty thousand dollars for the town hall, but let's assume we get one of these restoration companies out here, and it turns out there's woodwork that needs to be done, or repair work, or some other thing, and it turns out to be one fifty. Well, that's a whole separate conversation we haven't had yet, right? So I don't know if we'll have it in time, but that's the goal, right? And if not, with a skip over it, people will say, what's that for? And then we can just highlight that we got a grant, and we have money for complete streets. I mean, basically, we have money returning from the police station, we have money coming back from Minnham Road, we have funding, tons of funding for this. We've been planning it for six years. Thirteen are the buckets for CPC. Fourteen, and I have Jack on the line, this is the Overly District for North App, but I have a question, Jack, if you can. This was a process question that I.
Oh, Tom has to hand it to him. I'm sorry. I just noticed that. Hello. You're calling on me, right? Sorry. So Tom Marley.
All right, Tom, what, what article are you looking to talk?
It's actually more of a general question.
Okay, so, Tom, Tom. We're kind of just going through this point by point, so can we get to you towards the end for the general question?
Well, it's about going through point by point. I was wondering, is there someplace we can view the draft of this, um, from home?
Yeah, hang on, I can, I can, I can put it up.
Just so I can, uh, so we can follow along, that's all I was thinking.
Thank you.
No, I haven't. Are you, you can go ahead with Jack if you'd like.
I'm here.
I'm waiting, so, so Jack, I mean, it's just me being, um, hyper paranoid, but the North Ave parcel is currently by default zoned rural residential, pretty ninety-nine percent sure. So if overlay district isn't changing the current zoning designation of the parcel, how, how could we do a mixed-use development with an overlay district on a parcel that's zoned rural residential without also changing the zoning?
Because in the overlay, you got to think that it's on top of the rural residential zoning. And in theory, not in theory, but in reality, you can do both. You can do whatever's allowed in the overlay, plus you can always do whatever's allowed in the underlying zoning. You got to look at it that way. So the bottom zoning stays the same and we're just for these two parcels asking, uh, that the overlay be created and be placed on these two parcels. One of which is business zone, by the way, the little entranceway.
That was, so that's my question, because I don't think that mixed use, I mean, I don't think that business is actually allowed in rural residential, which has been part of our issue in the past. So need to expand this, I, I just want to make sure that we checked all the boxes.
I think we have, um, it will be, if passed, it would be allowed, uh, again, under the criteria that's outlined in the overlay district.
Because if anything, I mean, I would think that passing the overlay district would actually provide that level of comfort that maybe a lot of people are looking for about what type of development that we're actually willing to pursue on that. So even if we did have to, I'm just thinking aloud, even if we did have to do an additional zone change, at least they'd know what was, what was allowed to use on that spot with this overlay. So, okay, I feel.
You know, that's, that's a very good point though, Kim, because, um, you're right. Uh, it's going to allow a minor component be commercial, but it has to be very specific to the overlay district. It's not just all commercial, um, anytime, all places. So i- it's very specific to, as the overlay district is written, not beyond that. Not beyond, it doesn't fall into the general business category or whatever you have, the highway business category. It's specific to that. And if I can, Ken, I know there was a little confusion today, and I'm glad Cindy's here, um, about, um, this being a repetitive petition. And, um, statute says that as long as the planning board gave a favorable report, which they did, it can be repeated. If they hadn't, then you'd have to wait two years. And I lost you.
Excellent.
I was just, I'm good, I just wanted to, um, add some clarification on overlay districts. My experience has been with overlay districts, you have your underlying zoning, the basement place that allows you to do whatever you can do without the overlay. And the overlay has very specific, limited, detailed, additional things you can do in a particular area where the overlay is that you would not be able to do without them. So there is always some sort of tension between what you could do without the overlay and the overlay lets you do more if you choose.
Probably of the hard scale, uh, solar installation.
Other ones are senior living overlay districts, I've seen in a lot of other towns. Well, I just, I remember that, I mean, I know it's this board's intent and you've been talking about it for a year now that we want to try to do over fifty-five mixed use. All the boards, everybody talked about it, land use, CPC, everybody's on board with trying this up there. And I know that when we were at ATM, there was a question about, on the floor, about why we would limit what type of development could go up there if we're trying to like attract parcels, but we're trying to target a specific type of development and that's why. I mean, we understand that there might be a more lucrative type of thing that came, but that isn't what we want there. This is, right, it's a prerogative to try to narrow down the types of developments that are coming in. And that's, you know, that's, and if that, that's what we're trying. If that, if the town says otherwise, then now we'll know, we can go a different direction. But we've gotten forward on this.
Well, sweet fifty mil quid street. Jack?
Yes.
What's the difference between overlay district and a spot zone?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, it's possible that, uh, if we were doing permanent zoning on these two parcels, really under common ownership, it could be construed as spot zoning, but because it's an overlay district, it is not considered spot zoning. And, and that's why overlay districts have become very popular. As council said, they're very specific to whatever you want to do there and they're not considered spot zoning because the underlying zoning hasn't changed. So, uh, they're very popular these days. I mean, you guys have a few now, I believe, so you'll see them all over the place. You know, can I add one thing, Mr. Chairman? Uh, and I know I brought this up to you when you were going to consider this for the fall meeting. I mean, I was at town meeting and there weren't a lot of comments and, but it seemed like the few there were, it was really on the notion that you were entertaining, uh, selling this parcel. It wasn't so much about the details of the bylaw. Not because I wrote it, but I think it's a pretty good bylaw and it meets what the planning board and the board of selectmen and the land use committee, everybody I met with kind of wanted. But, um, I'm hoping, and I'm going to keep iterating this, that, um, we need you guys and others in town to stand up and, uh, if this is what you want, to say, uh, that you've determined that this is ready to be sold now and this is why. And that's something I really think town officials have to answer, not me. I can answer the bylaw, any question they have, but that I can't.
You're right, and I think that what we should do is at least one or two, uh, kind of info meetings on this specifically before the STM, just so that people who are concerned about it uh, can have their voices heard and explain, you know, why we're doing that.
Jack and I have already planned to have them do a presentation on this at the next meeting that we have on the tent. And then we'll also be doing, we're going to do that, whatever, online virtual.
Yep.
Um, answer the questions meeting before, so that people can come on and, um, ask about the warrant and anything on it and we can do it again there and we can do it again on the floor.
Tom, so I just want to make sure that there's, there are three pieces here, right? And one of, is it true that the one in the center is, um, at least someone had a constitution, right?
Yeah, there's, yes.
So in other words, that's going to be, that was the, uh, pollinator guard, right?
That's on the other side.
It doesn't need to be sold.
Right, that's what I'm asking. So, so these two pieces, it aren't changing that, it's just, if, I'm remembering, right? Originally, the piece at the top was supposed to be for possibly public safety, but then, but then instead you renovated the fire.
Future municipal use.
Yeah, right, thanks. Uh, and the other unit, which is the one, the other piece that's after pollinator guard, right? That's across from the, so across from the top of the, right?
The seventy, because on the.
That's the other piece that's, so in other words, the only thing that's really changing, you're always going to sell the one on the end, across from the, across from the zone. And then the one at the top that was going to be municipal use, you had to, to sell this, to make this mixed use over fifty-five.
Right, and then we've talked about too, whether or not there's value to a future developer uh, about including that lower parcel or not for overflow parking or any, you know, to see, like, option, right? Opt-in, so like the main one is the big one and then there we have the other parcel too.
But the overlay zone would be those two pieces or just the one at the top?
I think, I think top, the big one.
No, the, I, I understand what, uh, selectman Morelli is asking. The major piece we could, you're considering the top, it's actually two parcels. There's a little entrance off of Milford Street that's about fifty feet wide. That's the second parcel, that's why I'm probably getting you confused. I guess there's a third parcel on the other side of the stream that is not in the overlay district.
He's talking about pollinator, yeah, and he is, because that's it.
So, hold on, do you, I'm sorry, Jack, do you, do you have, do you have the map by chance?
Of course, how am I going to do this?
So if you, up in the top right of your screen, there's, uh, let me stop sharing, hold on.
Let me, yeah, first.
Yep, there should be, uh, next to your microphone button, there should be a little square with an arrow in it?
No, it's basically.
If not, I can make you a presenter.
That's hard, um, let's see, microphone, I got the microphone, open share key, how's that? Okay, now you can see all my files, um.
Not yet. Oh, wait, do it again.
Hold on.
The conservation easement.
I closed it and now I opened it. No?
Yeah, we don't, you know, we're down to the mic. All right, try that, can you share now? Oh, it says action there.
Only meeting organizers can share, it says.
There you go. I just made you a presenter, I believe.
All right, I got to find it, hold on. I just, I gave it to the clerk today, so like, it's around.
Or even if you want to email it, I can put it up.
No, I think I got it. It's easier for me to do this. Well done.
So why are you looking for that? What you're, what you're saying is the farthest east on sixteen, that one's already zoned business anyway, so we don't need to do anything with it. You're just talking about the one at the very top was reserved, originally reserved as a kind of a mixed use.
So strangely enough, we're going to feed in this business, but we're going to feed in the power conservation restriction, which I think we talked about relocating that piece.
Ann said we could relocate, we have to go to the state now, but to relocate that on the backside, it makes sense. Um, that was already in the back. This overlay would allow, which is that now?
Yeah, but I don't think that's superseding, but that is a superseded conservation.
No, but if the conservation easement is only two hundred and fifty feet, you've got the rest of the.
Yeah, sure.
Yes. What it, what it comes down to is that we would have to basically swap the conservation restricted area from one place.
Okay, we see your email.
I'm, I'm trying.
Say that's approved.
Have you been a recently? It's really difficult.
Yeah, it's not.
Everything.
You're giving our one to one. Yeah.
They want, uh. They wanted to save the front.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. And then that, it's all bad, so you're swapping perfectly, yeah. Yeah, but it's like conservation.
Yeah, right, you'd want to preserve them, you'd be rather preserve the conservation land than, than just regular use them for a conservation restriction.
Right, I, I know, I mean, for the, for the use of it, that land in the front, um, again, right now it's, and it'll get to the people, right? But.
Okay, so you've got, where the, where the overlay district is, is the X's, if you will. So yes, just the usable space right now of, of that. So for instance, this is my old house here.
Yep.
So this is the field, this is the Muddy Brook Conservation that, that comes up to two hundred feet like we were just talking about. So only what's, what's in the usable area at the moment is what is requested for the overlay district. Is that true, Jack?
Yes, and then in the blue, you see that little hatch marked the entranceway? That's a separate parcel and that's why I, I keep calling it two parcels.
Understood, understood.
Now, we did talk about, and I think Kim was getting to this, if you go on the other side of Muddy Brook.
Yep.
That's also town-owned property. We were thought, thinking of making that an ad alternate to see if whoever wanted this, it would not be zoned business, it would only be zoned rural residential. But if they had some need for this, maybe for a well, I, I don't know. I, I don't, my hopes up for that, but it was something we've thought about.
Two hundred feet back is business, unless, no, didn't we, did we?
So we were passed the law that everything on Route sixteen would back to a slot line? And then we started to, we ever, it didn't pass.
Oh, it didn't pass? A lot of those were not law.
Regal, we just have to have it in.
Just the answer.
Because we're really having this conversation.
The only thing that was considered for in the past that we've even talked about was a used car lot because there's no water in sewer and it wasn't suitable for solar, which is why we didn't develop it. So right now it's just an empty lot, it's used for overflow parking.
That you're talking about now.
Yeah.
Yeah, cross the line.
But this upper lot definitely is not to the lot.
No.
It's not.
That what?
The lot, business is not to the lot.
No.
It's just.
You got it, okay.
We haven't, we haven't been able to alter that lot since I've been here. So seven years of trying, different meetings to get something to know.
One question, just a quick question, how does that affect the solar field? If, if we sell that property, does, does, does the solar field go with it? Or do they have to have an easement to get to the solar field with their driveway?
There's actually a road there, that stays.
Right, well, would that be sold with the property or would it have to be subdivided out?
It's, it would be an easement, so, right, because it's exactly, it's just an access road, it's a utility easement. So it's just to get to back to maintain the solar, it's, so it was written into the original.
Okay, so it is written in.
Yeah, it was specified because we talked about actually upgrading that road at one point, making it a real road so that it was more marketable potentially for those other parcels, like making, you know, more like a cul-de-sac feel to it. Yeah, but right now it's still just dirt.
Yeah, I'm just trying to avoid problems in the future.
Dirt and gate, this gate there, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Jack.
Okay, Jack, you can stop sharing your screen, buddy.
I love this hybrid stuff, you guys are ahead of the game, I'll tell you that.
I'm having a hard time.
Yeah, but you have the ability to do it.
Yeah, this is so much.
All right, if you could just stop sharing, that would be great.
You got it, yep.
All it takes is a ninety-inch TV and everybody can.
Got it, thank you.
Of course.
Maybe even use Cindy, she won't be muted.
All right.
Oh, you'll regret that today.
Oh, I know, okay, uh, fifteen seems to be CPC historic things. I don't know, um, like I said, I don't know what the dollar amount, so I really can't speak to it.
Well, she would have to, it's on.
Right, but.
Why, why a ten percent evasion?
No.
Does she have a number yet?
No, this one is for fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is for some money to, to document this stuff. It wasn't a ton of money, I was at the meeting, I forget the amount though.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, sixteen, you know, about cameras at Lowell Fields wanting?
Yes, yeah, so I met with Dan and Sunset Zone over there. Uh, I don't know about the, the amount, Dan had worked on the amount with Sunset. Um, we met over there, uh, with, uh, because we have, we're, we're, hold on, I just changed hats, we'll say. Uh, we're, um, uh, working on the upgrades that you would, that were already purchased, um, for the, for the beach, with the wifi and access and that.
Okay, seventeen, this is the, um, Ann talked about this last time, about carving out that extra piece for, and. This is the, um, Ann talked about this last time, about carving out that extra piece for, in that on Providence Street, this is the one for the senior housing next to the senior center, right? And they have to, I forget the why, but we...
I, the, the why had to do with, with water. And, um, and the amount of land and how many, the permitting of the well was going to be way excessive uh, unless we cut it down and just break it off in it. And it couldn't be contiguous properties, they couldn't, like, they couldn't touch, has to be a separation and it's all about.
Okay.
A little bit of Henry, you had asked about whether or not we should be here to talk about this, we had some...
Good e, good evening, I'm here.
Always here. Hi, Bill.
Good evening.
You wanna talk about?
Yeah. So, unfortunately, it's gonna be a little bit of lengthy understa, uh, lengthy, uh, story here to, uh, have you really fully understand what's going on. So, you can hear me well enough?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, great. So this is kind of a redo of what we did at the annual town meeting. So, there were basically four sort of details, components of what we did in, at the annual, which was that we set aside 3.2 acres, that we changed it from general purpose, general municipal purposes to CPA affordable, or per, CPA, purposes, which would be affordable housing, that we delegated power to the select board to convey it, and that we chose to convey it by lease. So, in the interim, we had, we have an application out with, uh, DEP for public water supply permitting. That's, you know, like, making our RFP more attractive. And the DEP basically came back with a ruling, and this, even though we're talking about the well, they're talking about the wastewater discharge. They're saying that because we have so many contiguous properties down there, senior center, highway, Clough Septic, and then this affordable housing project, that if we were to build that, we would go over the daily limit and we would have to build a wastewater treatment center. Okay? So the, and obviously, that would kill the project. So, the way to not get around it, but it, it resolves it, is if we don't own the land contiguously. So instead of leasing the land, we just choose to sell it, which is not a problem. It would still carry all the, um, covenants of CPA land in perpetuity. And, so now, it would be not just 3.2 acres, because we would be technically selling off the land for the zone one of the public water supply, and the corridor of land that goes down the hill to the, you know, for piping the water down to the 3.2 acres. So it changes from 20, uh, two, sorry, 3.2 acres, still the same 3.2 for the housing, but now we're adding about 19.8 acres plus or minus, um, to be sold. And that the conveyance now needs to be by sale rather than by lease. And the 23 acres is also just a calculation of, you know, like, percentage of the land that has to be, um, you know, like, set aside, but it's the actual area of the land. And also, we would still um, have like an open space, it would still be for open space, because most of it can be used, except for the tiny area that's actually fenced in where the wells would be. And, um, it, it would still have a, a conservation restriction on it. So the purpose of the, of the upland there does not change at all. It's just kind of like a technicality, but DEP didn't wanna go for our proposal unless it was by sale. I, I hope that explains what we're trying to do, and the only thing missing from the article is a tiny bit of wiggle room that we might need in case it's not exactly 23 acres, you know, plus or minus, and I'm not sure legally what, how we do that, but we do need to have a little bit of wiggle room in case we have to, like, divert the line going down the hill. So I'll stop there and ask for questions.
Really have any questions?
I guess my only would be, how do you put that, what you call wiggle room in there? Do you just not define the size of it?
Yeah, well, I talked to Cindy about that, and my, my engineer, my, um, geoscientist basically just said, put, put plus or minus, but I, I'm not sure, you know, how you do that. Is it plus or minus five acres, is it plus or minus, you know? You're right, how do you do it?
Well, I, I think the town council just, we just used the word approximately.
Okay.
I, I think if I understand correctly, though, that's the technical thing, plus or minus or approximately, or all the same, but if I, if I'm correct, Bill, are you asking, um, do people wanna know that there is a limit? Like, it'll be plus or minus two acres? Or versus plus or minus 10 acres? Is that where you're going with the concern? That there being so little of the plus or...
No, my only concern, no, my only concern is how you, how you word it legally, so that either people don't have a concern about it being too much, or... I don't know, I mean, approximately is the right word. I mean, we just don't wanna be constrained to exactly 23 acres in case we need a tiny bit more because of some unforeseen circumstance where we can't, for example, drill in a straight line, or...
I, I think approximately will do it now. Um, what you may want to do is get a sense of what the other limits of approximately might mean in case it comes up.
No more than 30?
Only 20, 30.
I would say no more than, I would say no more than 23 and a half. I mean, we're only really talking about minor adjustment here, as far as, you know, knock on wood, as far as we're concerned, it shouldn't be. 23 should be close, close to spot on, go ahead.
I will just make it no more than 24, then, if you think an acre is, is, I mean, approximately, well, eh...
Okay.
I would just say no more than 24, then, I give yourself enough.
Usually when we do it, 10%.
The only other concern, I'm sorry.
Oh.
The only other concern we had was that it's apparent to the public, possibly reading it in the newspaper, that they say, hey, wait a minute, this was 3.2 acres, now you're talking 23. So I think the way Cindy worded it was basically to sort of show that there still is just 3.2 acres dedicated to housing, and the rest is devoted to other CPA purposes. Meaning the, meaning the, uh, the well and the, um, transmission.
Okay.
It seems like you understand it, which is great.
Yeah. So do we wanna just say approximately 24? And that way, covers a little less than the 24, and gives you that space?
You're asking me, but, if you're asking me, that's really good, or not to exceed 24 acres, or whatever you want.
Yeah.
Approximately would be nice, because then it does leave the wiggle room in both directions.
Did not exceed 24 acres.
You gotta call you an ad approximately? This doesn't say that now, or does it?
In control of approximately.
Oh, approx, okay, get it.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
All set?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you, buddy.
Underneath the Muddy Brook, and when we bring water to the property, if, if it's underground, why do they need a quarter? What? If, if the pipes go underground under the Muddy Brook, it comes out to the, um, to the affordable housing areas, what's the quarter? So it means 23 acres for a quarter?
No, so, the problem, the, the problem is that with the, can, can take, without, with too much land, with the septic and everything that we have down there, they're all being owned by the town, we would have to build, we would have to build a sewer treatment plant now.
I get all that.
Yep. So that's why we're reducing the amount that would be owned by the town, that whoever buys it gets that 23 acres, but it's all conserved, conservation. See, before...
So that would be a contingent to then stays...
It already is, yeah, right, it would happen.
Yeah. Before, it was going to be leased. And that's what he was saying, is if you lease it, that means ultimately we still own it, that triggers that need for the treatment plant. If we outright sell this, if there's individual people that own it, but it's still restricted to a certain use, then we get around that need to develop a treatment plan. Everybody did, they run septic on their own, right? That's, that's...
I'm still listening, yeah, I'm still listening if you need me, but you got it correct.
So go ahead. No, no, what do you have?
How do they get around all the, I mean, doesn't, doesn't there, isn't there a stream or river that goes right through the middle of that, right?
Well, that's, I, I'm pretty sure that that's why we're not putting the well up in the back anymore, because the cost, that's why we're only developing that little piece in the front, because the cost of developing over or around the brook adds hundreds of thousands, and so we have a well site that's to the side, not back. That, that's where we originally started.
So you ran the idea or...
Well, I could be wrong, um, but that was our original idea.
That's the answer, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not correct. We're, we're actually going up on the hillside, because of this new subdivision that's going in off of Daniels Road, we're going to be approaching, uh, the developer to allow an easement across there, which would be a very short easement right across into the upper reaches of 52 Providence Street, back up to the preferred placement of the, uh, location of the wells, which is where we wanted it in the first place. And it, uh, getting under Muddy Brook is, is performed by just horizontal drilling, which you would think would be extremely expensive, but turns out to be actually quite cost-effective. So, yeah, we're coming down the hillside in a corridor, but the, uh, well sites are actually way up on the hill.
But now we don't need to get access from our site, we're coming up from the top, that's way better.
Correct.
Thank you, Bill, thanks for helping.
You're welcome.
So Article 18 should be select board, so not land use. So, this is, um, funds to survey Morrison Drive, 8 Morrison Drive, which is the police station shell. So this is what we talked about last time, so, um, we had a discussion in our last meeting about, um, the highway survey had come asking for money to do repair work to Kinsley Lane, and we had talked about the fact that we don't own it, and that we don't know who, where it belongs, where are the streets, and we talked about doing a survey. So we got one estimate this week.
So we got, we got a guess of a number from Gary, and how many? Uh, it's 25 for Kinsley, and another 85 for Hill, uh, which doesn't exceed the 50,000. They're gonna submit an official, uh, estimate, as well as Alan's going to seek, um, uh, other, other...
Right, we need...
We need three total.
Right, we, right, professional service, three written, rewritten.
Uh, just strictly to do survey to find out where the, where it is and who owns what.
Right, whether or not we ever do anything with the road at all, it's time to figure out where the boundaries are on this thing for the future.
Yeah, Hill, Hill, which is the little one that goes up, you're heading over by Alante. Yeah, right, and Kinsley, which is the other side of.
Okay. One of me.
Okay, this one is from, oh, this is from Jody, right? We talked, from the finance director, we talked about this last time. Um, Article 21, um, it says town clerk here, but I, I think it needs to be select board, any article that's, um, is, it needs to be sponsored by the board of selection, so... Right, it's up to you to decide, um, if you want to move this forward. This is what area would be taxed? Anybody have any idea how many parcels this would affect, or?
I guess, yeah.
What's the theory behind this, a no tax?
Well, this is very lucrative for communities that have a lot of tourists, but for us, just, I don't see it as a I see it more of a pain for, you know, it's according purposes than probably on the same...
Probably what I'm saying is that, is that farm tax that we get rid of, because it just gives them a lot of revenue on it.
Well, personally, I do not support, um, this coming from the select board, and if that's the only option.
Right, this, I, I, did this, anyone know if this came from the taxation committee? I don't think it would have, right? Okay, so it's not from a committee, so it is the boards. So you need to, you lease. Maybe that, okay.
I'll leave taxes for us.
I'm not, no, I don't. I don't see it.
I think it'd be administrative burdens. Well, again, do we even have it?
Well, yes.
I, I don't know, and I don't know...
We don't have a hotel. We don't have...
I'm sure we have some accessory.
The only thing would be is people who need a short-term rental for. I mean, it might be something like that, that room that's next to the ballroom. You know how they had that bridal suite?
So, somebody lives there, that's a residency.
Is it a residency?
Yeah, they don't even use that anymore.
We don't have that anymore. I think that only applies to the one of 30 days. Just a little, just a...
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay, folds, okay. Next, um, is if we can mail a warrant, right? What is it? We tried this a couple of years ago, remember, people said we shouldn't be limiting access in this day and age, they still need to run it in the crier. This was six years ago, so, this would be great, I mean...
Delivering it by hand, like it says, or by means, but I think five land is the best.
You got a lot of free time?
I don't know, do you want to put it in the town primary? Just be able to distribute it electronic?
Yeah.
Like we do where you're doing?
Yeah, we post it online, you could get it online, we'd mail it to you if you asked, we'd hang it up still on the regular spots that we do, I mean...
So you can get it on a computer printed?
In theory.
You gotta make it accessible.
I see this stuff going that way.
Me too. Uh, but I'm, uh, but realistically, there is a cost in having these things printed, and so, I mean...
I just remember, I think it was six years ago, I remember this, like, and, like, it was like...
It, it was, it was like a...
Pretty much put a lease law on it.
Diane was here, and Diane wanted us to put it on here, that was one of the last things, I think, that finally... Yes. Yes, so, okay, we'll leave that on, it would be great for saving money, we're all about that.
How much is your cost per, you know? Isn't there a time to...
That's Laura, and I don't remember time.
Certain dates, and surprises.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, we, I mean, we have to get it done this Thursday, and the meeting is three weeks from now, in order to make the print deadline for the crier, which runs every other, so...
To me, that's the biggest issue, is the timing thing of being able to have more time to get things changed without having to get a delivery to be... And what's the difference between that and the direct? We were, like...
One time we did, one time we actually had to mail it out, we did mail it out.
Well, right, the direct mail, though, we had to fold, we had to have it folded and stuffed.
Yeah.
Which I think we did, we took it down to Danny Kelly's.
Yeah, we, but we were able to do it bulk mail somehow, by the way we folded and stapled it. But I, like, but it was, it's a...
But it was still pricey.
I, I feel like it was $1,600, but I could just be... I feel like it wa, it cost double what it normally costs, but we wanted to mail it for some particular reason. I think maybe it was 2015 in the override. Some reason we wanted to make sure everybody had it, we mailed it.
It might have been something else, and...
Yeah, so... Okay, um, alright, so that one's all set.
Should we meet?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's worth asking.
Okay, 23, so the last two meetings, we've talked about this a little bit, and I have been compiling all the questions. Um, Cindy and I have been looking at the different options, so...
Is someone on the call?
I don't know. I don't know. Ellen, is Ellen? Ellen, are you here?
She had curling tonight, but she was gonna, because I was gonna ask her a question about it.
Well, the article, the way that it's written, doesn't, this is what I wrote today, because I'm trying to encompass what it is that I think that you're all saying to me and trying to find what the options are. So just to recap, citizen's petition was written, and it was passed at a town meeting by the person's at town meeting. There was a process listed in the petition, but there are some questions that have come up about the process, um, and whether or not people understand what the process is or are there options for the process. So we, citizen's petition is not reviewed by legal counsel, it's not reviewed by anybody related to the town. And so, much like a citizen's petition that passed two meetings before with wording about transparency or technology, it, it wasn't enforceable, there wasn't anything to do. This has a lot larger ramifications for us if something is wrong, okay? Like between how you're elected or when you're elected or. So, um, I have a couple of questions, um, about it, and I don't know that it's clear still. And so Cindy was looking to see, so half the towns do it this way, half the towns. Well, so towns do it this way, which the way it's written, it says, um, three seats, one, two, three, popular vote, reg top, three vote getters. And then there's a line after that actually says, in future years, every seat is for three years, okay? Which I think is problematic, because if you have an open spot and it's a one-year term like yours, now that brings, that language is problematic.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right, um, I think, and we've also talked about being able to run for individual spots on the board, what that language would look like. So it's really up to you three.
Wait, that, so if you have, if you win the one-year seat, after the one-year, it comes a three-year.
Right, Ellen, Ellen talked to the Secretary of the Commonwealth, and I called the Secretary of the Commonwealth. And what I was told, and what she told me, the same thing, is that this popular person with the most votes gets, you know, a three-year term, and then the second gets two-year term, and the third gets one-year term. That's only for this election. And then after that, the reason that they go into the rotation that way is that you'll always have one or two seats that are open. If anybody resigns or anything else, then they just, it's like any other election, where they just, you would, you would, if it's within ninety days, it just stays open. If it's more than ninety days, then you have to have a special election. But all this is, you know, my, my thought was it would've been better if we had, you know, there were three seats, there was three-year seat, a two-year seat, a one-year seat, and you took papers out. And if you wanted to, you could take papers out for all three. And I asked, I asked the, the Secretary of the Commonwealth, and they said, what, three? Yeah, in other words, if you wanted to, if you wanted a chance to get all three seats, right? Then you could pull papers for three years, for two years, and one year, just for this term.
But you don't, but you don't hold one.
But you know, right, so in other words, if you were the top vote getter, then you would choose which one you want. Or you could just both, but what they said.
No.
Yes?
If you were the top vote getter for all three?
Yes, if you were the top vote getter for all three, this, the Secretary of the Commonwealth says, if you want all three seats, then you would get to pick which one, and then the next person down will get the next one. But the way it's written, but, but that can't happen, because that's not, who would do that?
Who would take out?
Yeah.
I want to up their chances.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but I'm just saying.
All right, okay, I just give it.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, that's what ha, that's what could happen if you did, did it that way. So the Secretary of the Commonwealth says it is what it is. So in other words, the way it's written is you, there are three seats that are open. Whoever gets the most votes gets the three-year term, whoever gets the next votes gets the two-year term, whoever gets the third votes gets the one-year term, and that's it.
Well, that's it if we assume that the language is the option that the town wants.
No, it isn't, that, that's what they voted, and what they, what they said, that's, people voted, that's what it is.
Just, right, just because something is passed, much like the technology policy, doesn't mean that it's the best option for the town. We have an obligation to do our due diligence to make sure that we've thought it all the way through, not this number of seats, but the process. And that's where my concern is. Um, I really would feel, I really think this, it needs clarification. I mean, the fact that we've even been talking about this at multiple meetings and not understanding what we've agreed to do in May is very concerning from a liability standpoint. I mean, the idea of somebody running for three seats, okay, that seems kind of outrageous, but that's, that concerns me way less than I'm thinking of, not this upcoming election, but I'm thinking of future years. I mean, what if we don't get three candidates? I, I just, how?
Oh, it happened, it happened in, in Milville. They have, they have, we only have three seats right now, because they didn't have enough people around. So they only got three seats, and the other two are open.
And so what happens to those seats? Like, they're vacant.
They're vacant.
I think we're missing, I think we're not missing, I think we're mixing two issues. Let's start with, in May, the town voted to go from three to five, and to have the process be to go popularity contest.
Right.
Highest gets the three-year, then the two, and the one. There is no question that no matter how you decide to expand and fill these additional seats, after this first election, they will automatically be a three-year term like any other select board position. And they'll be elected like any other select board position. If there's a vacancy in one of those seats at any point in time, that vacancy will be filled the same way any vacancy is currently filled.
What if there's multiple spots open in the same year? Are we still voting for them on one ballot and you're selecting multiple candidates?
No.
So you pull papers for one of the other seats.
Just like you would down the road. If, if two seats were open this year and there was no increase, you'd pull for one.
I wouldn't pass the same.
So, so that, I, that, so only one time we're having people select multiple candidates?
That is correct.
Is one vote or one time?
And the reason being is because for the, for this only one time, we've got a three-year seat, a two-year seat, and one-year seat. That's, that's what I was.
But going forward, you pull papers for an individual seat.
Yes.
Correct.
And, and the other thing is.
Wait a minute, why, I sort of, hold on one sec. So I couldn't pull papers for multiple seats in a regular election if there was multiple seats open?
Not for the, the same term.
Not for the same term.
No, because you can only serve one, you can only serve in one seat. In other words, you can't fill, you can't run for two board of, select board seats and have two votes as one person.
Right, I, I understand that, but what's the difference of the first time?
Because, because it's only a one-term or a two-term.
But what if I, no, it's only just a term of the year. If I won the three-year, the two-year, I could still beat you slug with two, two years at the same time.
No, you can't vote for two spots.
So, so then what's the difference, why, we, we, we're using that as an argument not to change what, what's upcoming, because you can pull for multiple seats.
You can't pull for multiple seats right now, that's what I'm saying, you can't.
That doesn't make any sense, that, you should be able to pull for it from, for any seat. You should, because you don't know if you're gonna win those seats.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
For this one election, to get from three to five, the way the town voted, they voted the whole kitten koodle. We'll go from three to five, and this is how we're increasing, which is the one-ballot popularity. That's how I've seen it done in most cities and towns that have done this, most towns have done this. However, we haven't found anything that would prohibit the town from revoting the whole thing and saying, we wanna go from three to five, and we wanna get there by doing individual ballots. But you cannot do that right now, the way town meeting passed.
Yeah, right.
In the spring.
So I would rather just leave it alone and just let it go all the way, because there's no downside to it, except that in the other way, you could have somebody choose to run just for the one.
I don't think, see, I see that, again, the whole premise was to attract additional candidates who might be too intimidated to run. And now we're having a straight-up popularity contest that people have to sign up for, not knowing what, how many years in a term that they might be getting. Like, let's say you really wanted the one, and you came in first, now you're on, I'm just, if the, if the idea is actually to increase interest in this board, people should, will have more, if they have more control over the outcomes of what they're committing to, you'd get a better, we're gonna get people that run, and we're gonna get so much turnover by doing it this way, I just.
If you go for the one-year term now, in one year, that seat is now up, and it's for a three-year term. It's not for a one-year term.
Yeah, but like, only if.
So your, your concern is getting people in and then having.
Well, I'm saying, I bet there are people, let's just say, they're on the fence about whether or not they want a three-year commitment to a thing, right? And right now, they're like, all right, well, I might be interested in getting on this select board, but I don't know, I might get stuck with three years, I don't know anything about it. We're trying to get people interested, and I.
Okay, I'm always.
Well, they're willing to quit, this is my.
The whole point is, if, if somebody won the three-year seat and wanted to serve one year, well, then they could, nothing's stopping me from resigning right now.
I know, but I just, I was.
No, I don't, no, I don't, I don't think so either, but I just.
I'd just feel a lot better if it was individual seats and individual ballots.
I do agree, because I think that, and I've thought, I've thought a lot about this, because I do think there's, there are positives, positives and negatives for each option, but if you give people an opportunity to try this out, you have a one-year seat, you have a two-year seat, a three-year seat, and also gives people the opportunity to say, well, who's running for this three-year seat? And you know what, I really don't think that person should be on the select one, or against that.
Right.
And it, it makes it about running a campaign and not running, and.
Just gonna throw my hat.
Another person is gonna have the most.
And, I mean, I, I just, I really agree with the idea of attracting more people, right? Because let's face it, we have a history here of people running unopposed, no offense to all of you for the most part, but we have races where there's only one candidate. And it is, and also, well, and also, it is, there is a cycle here, it's repetitive. People come back, which is great, right? But wasn't one of the arguments, they don't wanna run against big names in the community. I, we need more people to be interested, period.
Do you have language, if you're opposed to language?
I wanna work on language, I wanna, and I want.
Wait, we don't have time.
We, we do, I mean, because we, Council, Council and I, so we're gonna, we pass it tonight, and we say, um, subject to the two of us doing whatever.
I'm not, I, I wanna see the language. I wanna, if you wanna change it, if you wanna change to something that says, we're gonna, we're gonna have a one-year seat, a two-year seat, and a three-year seat.
Yeah, just for this.
I'm not, and I'm not opposed to that, we talked about that last.
I just wanna clarify.
But, but then, then, when's, when's the deadline to?
It has to go Thursday morning.
Right, we do it this week, and, and again.
Can we hold, can we hold a meeting like, I don't know, Wednesday, and you get it done in the next forty-eight hours?
I think we have to have a meeting, though, I think you can just, we can.
Can we do it that way?
We can just confirm that language looks right.
I think we can agree tonight to what you want to have him and I come up with, subject to.
Right.
Your review, and then each of you can get a copy of it and solicit and give back your individual feedback.
Because we can also amend the motion on the floor as long as it doesn't change the intent. And so let's say we get there and people say, forget it, fine, then we pass over it, but at least we tried.
That's my big concern. What I'm really trying to get is some kind of, I don't know even what we're using, except cluster on the floor. What I would prefer to do is, I, I think if you make it simple, that, like Lonnie, I don't think you were here, just discussed it the last time about, if you, if you had it, that, you know, we're going to, and this doesn't change the, the intent.
Right.
But it makes it so that people can pick, you can pick one, you know, a one-year, a two-year, or a three-year.
Right.
The only, but I, I asked the Secretary of the Commonwealth, because, you know, that doesn't change the spirit, it's, we really have to vote that. And first of all, yes, you do. The other thing you couldn't do is you couldn't stop somebody from pulling papers for all three seats.
And they might, but they can't fill three, right?
So they, so what they would do is that would give them the choice to pick which one. So they can't, in other words, if they, if they came in, if, if somebody pulled for all three seats, and they got the most votes of all three seats, they could pick and choose which one of those seats that they want. But at the same time, I asked, I also asked, well, what if we didn't change anything? And we just had, um, a popularity contest, like you, and what happened is the, the highest vote getter said, well, I don't want the three-year seat, I just want the one-year seat. Um, they could do that too.
But how, because the winner serves the highest vote getter.
Because, because they would decline it.
So.
Then they would be, no, I, well, I believe, I'm not extreme.
I don't think they.
The clearest way to do it would be to have people, you know, pick, I'd like to see them pick a three, two, or one, and then.
Me too.
Not be able.
Run for that.
And, right, and not be able to, to pull multiple seats.
But, okay, so.
But you can't, you can't stop them from doing it.
No, I understand, but that was the question I just had a minute of. If we have two three-year seats up from now, right, and so it's, it's, it's two thousand forty votes, and there's three seats up, sorry, there's two seats up for three years. What is stopping me from pulling papers for both of those three seats?
Well, because you wouldn't need to, because it's, because the way it's gonna be.
You can only hold one.
You can only hold one seat.
But you can only hold one seat now, because it's three.
Yes, but they're different, but they're different terms.
Different seats.
In other words, there's two three-year terms, you can only hold one term.
Okay, I just think somebody's doing that is just a malicious fool, I guess.
Oh, I think about this, is if there's a three, a two, and a one, you vote for all three, and you get your name on each seat, and then increase your chances of.
Okay, so, okay, but, okay, that hypothetical is happening right here in Alan's room. Have you ever, if, if somebody goes and actually physically votes, if I, if I hadn't been in the know and know this, maybe I'm just an idiot, but if I saw your name three times on a ballot, I would think I could only pick your name once, when I got the other two, I would be voting for something else, without some sort of instruction.
Cindy, that's not right.
What's that?
Yes, and I would probably do the same thing.
I could say, all right, well, Lonnie's the top box, and then you move down the next, and then you pick the next person down. Because, you know, let's, I think you'll get, I just think you might get six people or something for the one spot, like the one-year term, trying it out, and that's what we want. And then maybe if they don't get it, then maybe then they come back for the three, or they almost got it. That's what we need, people who are committed to doing this.
The other way, they, they thought that was the best shot, filling all three seats.
Yeah, well, it, it is, but that doesn't mean that that's.
But if somebody turned down, if somebody turned down the three-year seat, said, I don't want the three, I want the one-year, then they would be able to do them.
That's not the way.
And if you can get a third-year seat, which is your seat, right? You have no one hold that seat, technically, you might have to hold it and serve until your seat is done.
Now I love this even more, we'll block out the ballot.
Can we just stop that for a second? I think it's clear what the, the.
Right.
Pros and cons of what you may or may not want to do.
Maybe a more, maybe a more dangerous.
Well, if you are, you're in really good company, you can still, but it's clear that the board does not wanna change the fact that town meeting voted to go to three to five.
Right, we're not trying to.
Wait a second, let's not be clear on that. I definitely don't wanna do it, but I'm not, that's not an option, I have it for.
We're only trying to change the part of the vote.
Right.
That was the process.
And this, and we would not do that, because this, that would be out of order to change the number of seats.
Well, so you wanna be very clear that the language is.
Only changing, right.
To amend.
You're just changing the process.
Yeah, there's one of a men who found meaning to vote for the purposes of changing the process.
And I think we have, right, I think we have a responsibility, because we didn't participate last time. It's our job on behalf of the town to explain how it works. We didn't do any of that, because it wasn't ours, and so now, we can.
Fairness, it's because three times the board declined to.
Not true, not true, not true.
Well, I say that, well, I did it the second time, and it was suggested to me to remove it.
I just think we have an obligation to go to the town and say, this passed, we think this is the best. The board, select board, thinks this is the best option for how we process this vote. And they can still say, no, we wanna do it this other way. I mean, I just think that's right.
Right, that's all we're trying to. That's all you're trying to do, yes. And so you wanna just amend the town meeting vote.
Right.
To change.
We wanna process, just the process, just the process.
That's not, yeah, not the.
And I, and I, and I'll be clear, I, if you remember that night, I thought it was, you pulled papers for a three-year, a two-year, and a one-year.
Which is right.
Surprised, yeah, right, and I was surprised that it wasn't. What I'm trying to do is just, I, I just don't wanna, I just know how this, sometimes how this stuff. I remember one time we were trying to change zoning thing, this is a long time ago, and you remember this, because we changed, we changed the, the type of zoning, and then we didn't pass any place that actually had that type of zoning, because, because the town people are so confused about it.
Oh, yeah.
And that's all I'm trying, that's all I'm trying to do is, if we can do it elegant, simply, clearly, simply, and just lay it out.
Our changes, you pull for these papers, these seats.
I'd like to see the language.
And then we'd have to make sure people understood, a yes vote means we're changing the process from what town meeting voted, and a no vote means we're sticking with the process town meeting.
Right.
I mean, there's gonna be a debate on the floor. There's no way to avoid it. But there should be.
I think you'd be surprised.
That's why we have the meeting.
Yeah, I think you'd be surprised if that's what you do, if all you're doing is changing the process of picking, I don't think you'll have an argument. Because it's still, because it's still...
You're gonna do this again, I mean...
Because it's still, well, because we're, because you're still picking three seats. I mean, you're still picking three new seats.
Yep.
You know, for a total of five. You're not changing the number of seats. You're just, you're just allowing somebody to pick and choose.
This first time.
If they want, yeah, if they want one-year term, two-year term, what they call agreement.
Getting the board up to...
So then it's not, we don't have to worry about these, what, I don't understand, these over, like this, oh, somebody votes for four, and now the whole thing is tossed out, you know, like, if they don't understand, I mean, it'll be very clear. This is one election. I mean, this is another one. This is another one.
It's just, it's our standard process for people to go along with. And I'm not saying that people wouldn't figure it out, or anybody's not intelligent enough to figure it out. My brain is even having a hard time right now. We, that's what we do, right? I mean, we're here. We all thought it was even different.
Yes.
Right, and it's, and that's the process for every seat going forward anyway. So it really is no different. It's what they've seen before. So...
So you, so you're gonna...
We'll do it.
Can we do the language and then just, just pass it by us to approve it?
Yeah, exactly. You will, you will see it again once we've amended it, which will probably be tomorrow. And then this is what, you know...
But it's not gonna get changed until we call a read on it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, it's not going off like this. This is...
No, it's not, it's probably going to go like this. Well, this is, well, like, we're not gonna do this. We just pulled the article.
That's it. We're not asking to change anything else, right? And nothing's known.
I mean, if it does, if it doesn't change, then we just, we pull this article. It would be nothing to discuss.
So let me ask you this question, for simplicity's sake. Should we keep this vague? Like, should this just be to see if the town will...
You need to, I think that's the problem. I think you need to specifically design, define it.
I think if you don't put in a change in process, when people, I mean, if they were to vote it down, technically, that could be viewed as, "We don't want five." We're back to three.
I don't think so. I think, I think, well, which, no, I think, no, the way you... My, my understanding is, that you specify that, you know, to see if the town will vote to change the election process for this one, for the upcoming election. So, so the candidates can, so candidates will pull for three separate races. A three-year term, a two-year term, and a one-year term.
And then we can discuss on the floor what we're actually taking.
Yeah, we can explain it. But, but we should have, we should have it written in such a way that if somebody can read it in a second, and then we can just vote on it, then just go through it.
Well, you know what might be helpful? You know what might be helpful? If someone put together a quote-unquote sample ballot, what it looks like.
Is the moderator still on the call?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's town meeting. Tom?
He jumped over historically.
Oh. Oh, he's here. Hi, Tom.
Have you been listening, Tom, or?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so, so what we're talking about is, is an amendment, an actual, or an article that defines the process to allow people to pull papers for one of the seats, either a three-year, two-year, or one-year, rather than just having it as a popularity contest with the top three vote getters. So not gonna change the numbers, just defining the process.
I guess my, my one ask would be, can there be some sort of comparison done with how many towns do it one way and how many do it the other?
Well, this is only the, everybody does it this way.
My argument to that would be, it should have already been done. I mean, we are out of time now. I mean, this is...
People voted for it this way.
Okay, but that was their only option.
We tried to find that information, and we really couldn't. Most of the towns that we've found have done popularity contests. What we did find is there is absolutely nothing that prohibits going the way you want. And short of going to every single town that's gone up from three to five and going to their town meeting votes, it's just not readily...
Frankly, it's a preference, and the people didn't get an option. So now we're giving them the option, and if they want to keep it the way it is, then they will. So I think giving them the option to look at this process and decide which one they do is a good one.
I would just want as much information provided to people as possible about each option, you know? That's my one ask. But, of course, you know...
Do you, so should we, should we do the study about whether or not we should go from three to five? Or are we just gonna skip that step?
Don't have time for that now.
We have to skip that step, so why would we?
For simplicity's sake, there's a lot of steps here that were skipped to get us to this point, which is why there's so much confusion right now. But our only responsibility, as far as I'm concerned, is to protect the town's interests and how it gets conducted, right? And the board gets to put forward an article with their recommendation for how they think that should happen, and the town can say yes or no. That's it. I mean, it's, you know, we can, I'm sure there will be discussion on the floor about studies. I mean, this is a very hot topic.
This is a very topical situation. There's this way to do it, there's this way to do it, and it doesn't really matter what other towns, how they do it. Because it's how they choose to, and it's their preference. And it's only this preference situation, this isn't any sort of scientific background or data necessary.
And people get the opportunity this time in our pre-meetings and whatever to have us explain what's happening, which we didn't get last time.
Tom, we can, we can do, just like Jay used to do, is have a kind of a meeting before the meeting. And do some kind of a remote meeting, so everybody can tune in and go through all the articles and explain everything of all the articles ahead of time, so everybody knows. But just like we did with the school and everything else.
Right.
Including this in that, in that.
Um, yeah, absolutely. I just...
I think two simple ballots is a great idea.
I do too. Okay, great. But you're gonna, but you're going to wordsmith the language, and then you're gonna let us know like this, that we can approve it before it goes out.
Right. Kim and I are gonna work together on the language and what we think it should be, and it's clearly going to be just like we talked, when men, the spring, for this process.
Can you make sure you, you pull Ellen and then you do?
Absolutely.
Could you potentially email me this draft?
After we just, after it gets figured out.
Well, yeah, yeah, just the draft of the warrant, just so I know what...
Yes, yeah, once it's...
What?
It'll be posted for everybody, but you'll get it.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm not sure if you're gonna approve it tonight or not. Just want the draft. If it's not approved yet, that's all.
We are gonna approve this one pending the language changes that we do in council review. That's what's happened tonight.
I would just ask that you either include Ellen or Ron Meyer before we go. Because I know she's the one that had it. Because my argument at first was the way that it was written was going to allow us to do it, you know, whether we be free to, to already do it without taking one, two, always, you're saying.
Right, because my first question to Cindy was, who actually gets to determine the process?
Right.
And it's us. So, and then the town votes, and then they decide. We have a responsibility.
The way it's structured right now?
Right.
The town meeting will have to determine. Right. Okay, good. Wait a minute. Question Chairman?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You can wait. Might I maybe make an observation as a question?
Yes.
From what I understand, it's, it's being proposed that one person can run for three seats with the option of picking only one. And I get that, that's fine. But if it's written up on the ballot as they're in three separate locations, people are gonna get confused.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's, we'll make sure it's as straightforward as possible.
Okay.
Because it's gonna look like a misprint if you, if it goes that way, without some explanation prior to.
Yeah, we'll say one year, one year term.
Then again, you're chose by how many check out.
And then there'll be different people.
Right, and the people that ran for them, just like you were selecting any other board, like planning or something.
But if it was Lonnie Tinnio for one-year seat, Lonnie Tinnio for two-year seat, Lonnie Tinnio for three years.
Any, anybody that pulls for each seat is really seriously just being malicious.
I don't think, as I said, as a example, I don't think we put all the names in everyone in each seat. We're gonna have different, to show that there's a difference, there's gonna be some names in the three-year, some names in the two-year, some...
I think to Mark's point, people are gonna know who pulled for what seat, pulled for all three seats. But people are gonna know who is running for what, and they're gonna calculate what their best odds are, and they're gonna figure out how much they want to campaign or not campaign, or commit to this, and then they're going to decide. That's the point. Like, rather than, "I'm just gonna throw my name in and see what happens," they're making a conscious choice towards what they're doing, and that there's more accountability in that way, and that's what we need. Not just, "Oh, we're gonna throw it in."
I think if you do it the way that we're proposing, you'll get more people.
I think so too. That's what was the goal.
But it needs to be clear that some, if somebody tries to make an amendment on the floor to change it from five back to three, that's going to be, that's going to be out of control, and that can't...
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, this demo thing is you, Lonnie, by law.
Oh, yeah, it's not done yet. There's a draft copy here, but they were still working on some fine details. It'll be ready.
Okay, and then 25 and 26 for the acceptance of these roads? Laura, no? Not ready?
No, yeah, I haven't. I've got an email out, I'll see if he's got any reports. They asked for a placeholder, but so far, nothing, so they might...
We don't have...
We can, we can pass it, yeah.
Or we can, I mean, if he doesn't know by, what is he waiting on? Right.
Yeah, I just...
If he's even on here, they have to...
Yeah, they'll pass it over, right? I would take mine, especially if they're...
They asked for a place.
I know what it's like to try to get it over.
So it's...
Because you gotta wait a little while.
You gotta wait another six months?
Yeah.
Okay, and that is that for the warrant. So the motion was probably to end, right?
Yeah, we put the clock up, yeah.
Right, so you're gonna make that motion.
I moved to approve the 11/21 special warrant pending town council and town administrator approval.
Yes, but, and again, with the understanding that we're gonna approve the language.
First of all, 23.
Yeah, one second. Okay. All right. You, Tom, lose the call.
So we've narrowed down basically the format where Laura and I were talking about the email today. I think we're gonna do it in the same way that we would do annual reports, where it doesn't freak everyone out in the beginning. We were asking for information, right? I think this biggest, people are gonna be confused. And so, we're gonna send an email out this week that says, we're gonna start doing a newsletter. You know, I want to give them a sample of what the format should look like. I'm looking for paragraphs, I'm looking for one or, you know, two bullets about something that happened in the last quarter, six months, that would be relevant to residents that we can send out in a newsletter. I'm guessing that we're just doing this electronically. We're gonna post it online, and then we'll make it available. We'll send it out to all the men in email addresses once in spite. I don't think we're doing a print and mail thing, correct? Because we did not budget for that.
I think it's something that can be...
Expanded.
Right.
We could maybe partner with the senior newsletter in the future, I was thinking, but we'll take a look at that. What I really, I mean, we really just want it to be hitting the highlights of what's going on and like contact numbers for more information about whatever.
I'm not envisioning another page into the homepage where people can just click on the newsletter.
Yeah, exactly. Here's the things, and then, I mean, I just, I'm curious about what boards are gonna be sending us and what they think is. You know what I mean? That's what I'm curious to see. So we're gonna see that this week and see what comes back. So that's the status of that. So I was trying, I'm still trying, I wanted to do it in conjunction with this STM, because then we could get a little bit more clarification on some of these articles. But, I mean, we're getting close, so...
That's not a lot. Just get it out the first week right before the...
We could also, like, do a year-end newsletter and then, you know, aim for May, but yes, you know. Um, you know, it...
That's, that's a lot.
Well, I mean, I'm saying December.
Yeah.
Oh, and then...
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because then we basically recap what happened from July to December, and then we do another one for May, so... Let's just see what we get back first, and what that's, you know. Some stuff is not pulled into public consumption all the time. So that's the story on that.
Awesome.
Thank you. And I have like...
Discuss my research, is that an executive session?
Format. I don't know. Is this an executive session or a research session?
That was a decision to the board, whatever they decided, like, don't...
I was like, "Ask me," I said.
Well, we have a decision.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would likely be, I think some of the things are pretty... Because it's respectful litigation, and I don't want to...
Yeah, fine, we have a posted executive session.
Anybody?
We, so we can just talk together.
Anything else to say?
Right, I'm going to the executive session, the national law chapter 3A, section 21, purpose three, discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to bargaining with our union local 272, meant to have a department with union local 372. Discuss in an open session, maybe don't try to bargain, reconvene with your chairman. No problems needed. Second. We're all in.
Can you, I?
Really. Thank you, everyone. Good, have a good evening, your recording.
Thank you.
Good night, soon, yes.